Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Words? You're muted.
Good evening. We have Mr. Slaven in attendance. Mr. Chadwick. Ms. Weiside, myself, Ms. Words, Mr. Bessie is not in attendance tonight. We also have Mr. Sullivan here.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, please, Mr. Sullivan.
Judy, just have somebody else do it for a moment, please.
Tricia, could you do it, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence in honor of the Queen of England, Queen Elizabeth, who died last week at the age of ninety-six. To me, it's incredible that she spanned over seven decades, and for many people, she was the only monarch of the Commonwealth nations. So I would ask for a moment of silence in her honor, please. Thank you. I also would like to ask for a moment of silence for the thousands of people who were affected by the attack on the United States twenty-one years ago on nine eleven. We probably all of us remember where we were and what we were doing, and we'll never forget that. May I have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Announcements. Mr. Chadwick, I will go to you first.
I have one announcement. This Saturday at Swayne Field at five PM is the Wareham Tigers Athletic Association Football and Sideline Cheer Home Opener. All three squads will be playing, starting with the might squad, which is the second and second, third, and fourth graders and ending at nine thirty. The last game starts at eight o'clock with the midget squad, which is the seventh and eighth graders. Home opener. Hope to see everyone there to support the youth of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The record should show that Mr. Bowen is also in attendance at this point. Mr. Slaven, announcements, please.
Okay, here we go. This past Saturday, Royal Crest, the sports was there also with me. They had their basically ribbon cutting. The importance of that is they're the first of our eleven. Basically, you know, parks that the people that now who live there have actually bought the land that their mobile homes are on, so they actually own the park as well now. It's the first of hopefully many more of these conversions. These people have done a great job. They worked hard at it. They've reached out to some of the other parks near them to offer assistance, and other parks have actually reached out to them. So I hope to see a lot more of that here. On Sunday, Stevie from Peerview did his usual airborne reunion, which we did in onset. It's kind of sad in a way that every year that we go, there's less and less participants as they a lot of these people basically have passed away over the years, and it's getting, it's getting not very many left. It's kind of a shame. I'm always concerned that the veterans never really get to do and never really get the respect they should have, and our country really doesn't take care of veterans very well overall. We have a really great family event coming on the twenty-fourth of September, and I do mean a family event. Kat Jones and the OBA are bringing back the Harvest Moon Festival, which used to be ran for years here, and it was really a great event in the fall. It will start at ten o'clock in the morning over an onset by the pier and also onset app. What's happening is we're going to have a cruising car show, going to block off out of onset app in that whole area plus the pier, and the cars will all park through that area. You'll be able to walk around the cars, walk on the street. There'll be no traffic going through at that time, and that will last probably till two or three o'clock. If the people who have their cars, they want to stay longer, they can. During that time, there'll also be entertainment. There'll be food trucks and other vendors. I think there may be fifty vendors as well. At approximately dusk, which should be about seven fifteen at night, we will have a fireworks display virtually the same as we normally would have in July fourth. So this is a full day celebration in onset, and hopefully everybody shows up and enjoys what should be a great time. This Thursday, if I remember right, the Parker Mill Dam public demonstration, I should say demonstrator, public explanation of what's possibly the pub, excuse me, the Parker Mill Dam removal will be at five thirty. It will be at the Tremont Nail Facility. I think it's going to be the freight building, the demonstration. Anybody that has any concerns, issues, or questions, I suggest they be there. That's it.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Words?
Well, I don't have to say most of what I have. Thank you, Alan. But I do have one thing I want to mention. On last Friday, I attended the Zoom, the Mass Municipal Legislative Recap Meeting. It was very interesting. They have forwarded slides to me and additional links to the recap of that meeting, and I would be happy to share it with anyone from the select board that is interested in looking at it.
Thank you. We will move on to appointments and reappointments. Could you let Ms. Parr into the meeting, please? And we will start with the reappointment of Leonard Booton, who will not be present but has applied for reappointment to the Wareham Historical Commission. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we reappoint Leonard Booton to the Wareham Historical Commission for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I will go for a roll call vote then. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. We now have Jessica Parr, who is applying to be a I guess it's an associate member of the Conservation Commission. And you are with us, Ms. Parr. Do you choose to introduce yourself and explain what you'd like to be, why you would like to be appointed?
Sure. Thank you for having me, Jessica Parr. I live here in Wareham. I am a real estate attorney and also member of the Garden Club. And very interested in participating and helping out where I can and was introduced to Conservation Commission by way of our chairwoman Sandy Slaven, who was also in the Garden Club with me, and so I thought that it could be an area where my interests and background might have an opportunity to create an opportunity for me to be helpful in some way.
Thank you. If any of my members have a question of the young lady, would you raise your hand, please? I have some questions from Mr. Bessie, who was not able to be here tonight, but he did ask me that I ask them of you, if that's okay.
Of course.
Okay. Have you read the bylaws, the wetlands bylaws for the Town of Wareham?
I have. I've done a preliminary read. It, to me, I would like to read it again more fully, but I have read it one time. I'm better when I read something more than once.
And how many meetings of the Conservation Commission have you attended? Three?
Yes.
Okay. And do you see any conflict with you being a realtor and being on a land permitting board?
I don't see any conflict that wouldn't be avoided just by disclosing or by abstaining from participating in conversation where there could be potential conflict. Being fully transparent, I think, would avoid that.
And you understand that before, if presuming that you are appointed tonight, you cannot be sworn in until you have taken your ethics test as well as your or your ethics training from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is online, as well as having read the open meeting law, which is fifty-eight pages long.
I've done both.
Oh, awesome. Okay, great.
A certification for both.
Oh, awesome. Great. Any other questions? Then I will accept a motion, please.
Make a motion that we appoint Jessica Parr as an associate member for the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. Thank you very much. The paperwork probably won't be ready until Monday, to be honest with you. But Monday in the Selectment's Office on the second floor or the third floor, depending on how you count it, of Town Hall. And you need to bring your two certificates in with you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, everybody.
Take care.
Thanks.
Good luck with Sandy.
The next item on are you planning on sleeping in the garage? I need to say it out loud.
I'm already there, so it's fine.
Okay. The next is a liquor license extension request from Project Half Shell Inc., DBA Cohog Republic, one ninety-seven onset app, onset mass to re-extend the seasonal license from the end of November, which is when it expires, from December first of two thousand twenty-two through January fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. All of the paperwork is in order. I don't believe, I'm pretty sure they're not here with us tonight. And if you are here from Cohog Republic, please raise your hand, but I'm pretty sure they told us they were not going to be here. Okay. Any questions on the application?
Do we know?
Mr. Slaven?
Well, I just want to make a comment to thank you very much. About five years, four years ago, when we first set them up, we made them put up a plastic Plexiglas wall along the sidewalk and stuff, which was really high. It also made kind of uncomfortable sitting behind there and eating because of lack of wind for the cool down and everything else, and we had suggested that a year or so in that they take it down. It took them a couple of years, but they finally did, and I think it makes a huge difference being there. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Just the same question I asked about all liquor licenses. Do we know if there's been violations? But they're not here, so.
That's correct. There are no violations.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? I will accept a motion.
Make a motion to open the hearing on
No hearing.
No hearing for this. Okay, make a motion that we approve a license or permit for a liquor license extension. Excuse me, let me start again. Make a motion that we approve a liquor license extension request from Project Half Shell Inc., DBA Cohog Republic, one ninety-seven onset app, onset mass.
Second, and the motion would be to extend the seasonal liquor license. That's your motion, right, Ms. Words?
Yeah, it says extension here, so it's
Right, but it's a seasonal liquor license.
Seasonal liquor license, yes.
And that was your second, Mr. Slaven?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick? Mr. Chadwick? You said yes. Can you raise your hand? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. It is approved. The next is an application from the Buzzards Bay Coalition for a license that they are, they've rented their facility for a wedding ceremony on the date in, in the packet. We will have the health inspection signed off on the correct application. They did sign off on the one that was an incorrect application, but other than that, all of the paperwork is in order. So this is for a one-day liquor license on October thirtieth from one to four at Onset Bay Center. May I have a motion, please?
So Judith, I just need to clarify something. When I talked with Cassandra this afternoon, she had not had any of the signatures yet on these papers. Do you know if that has been completed?
Yes, all of it Stuart signed, and we got it all.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the application from Buzzards Bay Coalition, one hundred and fourteen Front Street in Bedford, Mass. for a one-day liquor license on October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two from one PM to four PM at Onset Bay Center, one eighty-six Onset Ave, Onset, Mass. for a wedding ceremony.
So a second? Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? And again, the only thing that we're missing would be the health inspection, but they have already signed the paperwork. They just need to sign the new paperwork. I will go for a roll call vote then. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is approved, four zero zero. Next, I would like to have a motion to ratify the hiring of Sharon Rice, who is the new Council on Aging Director. Mr. Sullivan, do you have any input for this, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, Chair. There was almost thirty persons that applied for the position. Mrs., the Assistant Town Administrator, Ms. Allen England, and the COA Director, Missy Desick, interviewed approximately eight people. They only interviewed those with experience after going through the initial applicants. They forwarded two to the next round, which were then interviewed by COA Chairperson Sharon Frank, Mr. Bessie, Select Person Bessie, and myself. Ms. Allen England is in that as well, and Ms. Rice was the unanimous choice. So we're really excited to have her on board. She has, she has a really, really great background. From just the municipal side, she's worked for, she currently works as the Assistant COA Director for the City of Attleboro, which again has a diverse population, which, you know, in some ways can mimic our own, so that's great. She also has a background from working from Parks and Recreation to Housing Authority. So, and before that, she has some background in the private sector, including home loan business and marketing and PR. So nice, really great background. Came with high, high regards from the City of Attleboro, so we're very excited to have her on board.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions of Mr. Sullivan? Please raise your hand. I see none. Then I think, Mr. Slaven, you were jumping in there to make the motion. Do you want to go ahead?
Just go ahead. Just go ahead and move to approve the hiring.
Ratify the hiring.
Ratifying, if you like that word better.
Yep. Is there a second to that motion? Yeah, thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Then I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
To Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda. Oh, the next, yeah, the next one is the periodic curbside opt-out reduction fee applications, and I would need a motion, please, Ms. Words, for that amount, which is on the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the opt-out and reduction fee applications for curbside billing FY twenty-three in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars.
May I have a second? Thank you. Motion made and seconded. They seem to be very slow on the uptake tonight, Ms. Words. What do you think? To approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Absolutely, yes.
Myself, yes, so four zero zero. The next item, the citizens who are asking to create this Alternative Energy Committee asked to be postponed for another week. They are not yet ready to put their presentation before us, so we have scheduled them at a later date. And Mr. Slaven asked that we have item D, which is policy number three regarding class two license holders. It's a policy that we've had for a while, and I believe you have a copy of it in here. And then the copy, the, the policy says that the Board of Selectmen have limited the number of class two license holders to twenty. So, Mr. Slaven, I'd like you to lead the discussion, please. This is policy number zero three dot dash three. It was originally adopted in two thousand and three.
We have had this policy for quite a while, but again, as everybody knows, I always say that a policy is a nice piece of paper from a legal standpoint. It's always a question whether really it would hold water or court. To me, I look at this as a possibility of restraint of trade. It's up to the board, who are the licensing agents, to license anyone coming forward. So that really controls how it works anyway, so I would recommend very strongly that we basically dissolve basically our oh-three dash three.
I think the word would be discard.
I like dissolve.
Okay, dissolve and discard. Is there a second to that motion? Guys? Motion made to dissolve and discard the policy number zero three dash three, which regards the number of class two licenses that would be permitted in the Town of Wareham. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'm trying to, I mean, I read all this. I looked it up. I looked at what it meant. I have no idea how many of these licenses we already have out. I have no idea what would happen if we remove the restraint. If we don't remove the restraint, I just don't have enough knowledge to make that type of decision.
We have eighteen outstanding, and we have one individual who has come in indicating that he or she would be willing to apply for one in reviewing the paperwork for the application, and I'd like to always review paperwork for applications to see if we can update it in any way, came across this policy. So there are eighteen outstanding today.
And if we just discard this or retire it or whatever we call, we do with it, it opens us up then to have twenty or thirty or forty of them, correct? Versus having a limited number.
Mr. Bowen? It's sort of a question. If we, if we discard the policy limiting it to twenty, what are the Board of Selectmen's opportunities or restrictions?
Selectmen policies, as Selectman Slaven indicated, are advisory and not binding. They are essentially expressions of political intent and have no legal weight one way or the other. Now, regardless of the policy and what it says, anytime someone applies for a license, in this case, a class two license, you, as a board, are obliged to consider that application on its merits. Simply to reject a license application on the grounds that you have a policy forbidding the granted further licenses does run the risk of legal challenge on the grounds that you haven't articulated any specific reasons as to why a license should be denied. So regardless of the policy, anyone who applied, if you were reviewing it, if you had issues with it, it would be up to you or any particular member to articulate what those issues are and to get the votes to deny the license based on the reasons that you expressed. So that's sort of the black letter law explanation of it. Bottom line is this. Policies aren't really worth the paper they're printed on. If you've got a good reason for approving one, a license, approve it. If you have good reasons for denying it, say what those reasons are and take the appropriate action. I don't think that the policy matter, its existence or nonexistence, really matters one way or the other. You certainly could leave the policy on the books, but I wouldn't recommend that you ever cite it as a reason for turning down a license. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Words, does that help you out?
It, it helps me decide on how I'll vote on this, but I think it's a bigger issue.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to discard and dissolve that policy? Seeing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. And myself, yes, so three zero, three zero one. Thank you. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Slaven, we have had this discussion about the marijuana delivery system quota. We've had discussions. We've had this on the agenda, and we keep bouncing it because the state keeps giving us additional or updated information. So, Mr. Slaven, I believe that you got today's information or hot off the press. So could you lead this discussion, please?
Okay, here we go. It's, it's a revolving door sometimes. The delivery programs were originally put together not that long ago by the Cannabis Control Commission for what they call social equities, to allow those people who didn't have the large financial backing to get into the retail part of the business, or those who were affected by marijuana, et cetera, may have been arrested at one time or another, to give them the opportunity to get into the marijuana business. The delivery business is a very low cost compared to actually setting up any kind of grow, manufacture, or actual retail sales. So that's the basis of what was the reason for the delivery. There's two different deliveries. One is a courier, and the other is the actual delivery. Right now, we have two delivery companies that definitely make. We have a third one called Trade Wins, but I think they really should be considered a courier and not a delivery. We have already passed basis of the marijuana delivery to three to match, for some reason, the exact same numbers we have for retail. I've contacted the legislative person for the Cannabis Control Commission, who works between the commission and the House and Senate, and basically, Mrs. Giancarlo did not get back to me in time, unfortunately. My question is, where this is a social equity type of business layout that they set up by the state through the Cannabis Control Commission, I have no ruling and no information one way or another. Whether or not we really have a right to restrict the number of deliveries because of the basis of how they put these together. So I would say that right now we have three anyways on the books, so we have one open. When it gets to that point where we fill that one, we'll hopefully have a ruling from the Cannabis Control Commission whether we are actually allowed to limit this particular type of business operation, where it's been put together for social equity. And just as a sidebar, the social consumption project that was been approved by the state, Cannabis Control Commission has not put the details out yet. So what I suggested to Mr. Buckland, I think it's going to come through us, is that we put a one-year moratorium on the social consumption until the state gets everything in place of what they want to do, and then we can go ahead and decide. It's going to be very complicated. Restaurants, possibly how many, location, et cetera, where basically you would have social consumption of marijuana in restaurants and possibly other different venues, as they have cigar bars and stuff, you could probably have a marijuana bar. So this is an issue that's going to be very interesting to solve, and we're really waiting for the Cannabis Control Commission to give us the guidelines, and then we have a year in which to set up our own guidelines as well.
Okay, you said something that I just want to clarify. We currently have three that we, our bylaws say we are limited to a total of three. There are two outstanding, so there's one slot available for the
Right now, we have three because Trade Wins was kind of listed as delivery, but it really should be courier because of this business set up there, and I would, we'll get into it, but I think also we probably have to go into our bylaws, zoning bylaws, and clarify, you know, the delivery, et cetera, because there's nothing in the bylaws. It really talks about delivery is what it really is. Mr. Buckland is also working on that.
Okay, so we have to restrict our discussion to the delivery system quota, because that's what's on the agenda. I know that you gave some other Because that's what's on the agenda. I know that you gave some other information. Is there any question from any one of the members of this board? Raise your hand, Mr. Chadwick. I see your hand.
Go ahead. So. We're talking about this delivery system quota. My question is kind of, it's it's on this topic is. What is, is there a law that prevents? Receiving deliveries from other towns. Say, we put a quota on this as of three. We're only allowed to have three in this town, but you know, town next to us has. You know, forty delivery systems, so. All those delivery systems are coming to our town and crushing our three delivery systems. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Mr. Slaven or Mr. Bowen? Mr. Bowen, I guess.
Do you want me to read the?
Maybe just to jump ahead of Alan there. I I I think Alan's going to agree with me. That's what the state wants.
I'll read from the Cannabis Control Commission's actual website. Just put up with me. My voice is coming in and out today. They decided to readjust my back implant and it's kicking on and off. It's interesting. Okay, marijuana delivery operator. Marijuana delivery operators are are allowed to purchase marijuana and marijuana products from licensed marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers. And sell and deliver to customers. They may also. Securely store on their premises marijuana and marijuana products that have been purchased and they wholesale for eventual resale to the consumer. Residential deliveries of marijuana or marijuana products are limited to municipalities that one are listed on the commission issued license. As the licensees place a business. It allows for operation marijuana retailers, whether one or more establishes operation or not, opt in residential delivery. Basically, that's what they're saying here. And Mrs. Has may broaden the one time or another. Marijuana delivery office shall be limited on an exclusive basis. Controlled by and with the majority ownership comprised of, again, the economic and power of people. They they actually physically don't restrict. In any statement whatsoever that they can't basically have a delivery place, say, in Carver. Who then could deliver into into Wareham. If the person who bought it in Carver asked it to be delivered. To say Wareham, because Wareham does allow marijuana delivery.
Does that answer Mr. Chadwick?
It 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 does. And then that kind of leads into our other problem. At that point, if we put a. A stop on marijuana, if we only allow three in our town. And another town allows a whole bunch more, we're kind of cutting the throats of the three in our town.
That's why Jared, I've asked for the Cannabis Control Commission to let me know whether we actually can limit it or not. Again, because of this particular issue.
Yeah, I I just, I just don't see it being fair to people that are trying to start businesses in this town. If if other towns around us aren't going to be limiting theirs too.
Yeah, I don't believe we're going to make a decision tonight to limit it to the three. See, we see you already have a bylaw that limits it to three.
Right.
Already there. Yeah, so that has to be changed with town meeting anyways.
But I would also, yeah, hang on one second. Are you sat, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, I'm also.
Okay, Ms. Words.
I would also say that the Jared, that the. Businesses that are here also are, I believe, I need this validated. They're also able to deliver into other towns if they're called to deliver. So it's. It's freedom of business. I mean, so. I don't know that you fight that war about, well, other towns can sell into our town when we can sell into there by just increasing numbers. You know, I have a concern about.
We're not going to be debating that. That's a, that's your statement, okay? Do you have any questions, Ms. Words of Mr. Slaven? Okay, thanks. Mr. Chadwick, any other questions? Okay, thanks. Mr. Slaven, any further clarification on only the delivery system quota that is currently in place?
No, like I say, it's in our bylaws. I would suggest that we. Wait until we hear back from the Cannabis Control Commission to find out whether we can legally restrict this particular operation. To any number whatsoever, or whether, again, restraint of trade or the idea of the social equity, whether that goes against the basic idea of what they put together.
Okay, thank you. If you do get that clarification, could you please let us know in a, in an email? Mr. Slight and Mr. Sullivan, as well as Mr. Bowen and my.
Yeah, I was. What I suggest is you have me put it on the, suggest we put it on the agenda when the information comes through.
I I'm going to keep it on the agenda until we get an answer.
Works for me.
Yeah, okay. And so I don't believe that a vote is proper at this time.
No, I can't vote.
Yeah. Any other forty eight hour business? I'm not aware of any. So we will go to the town administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder, in October, we'll need to set the rates for. The the transfer station and the curbside pickup. So that's, we'll start putting together a presentation for you with the the backup for that information. So I'll make sure you know that's coming down the pike. Speaking of. The selectmen policies. See if I can pull it up real quick. We've got one out there that's thirteen dash oh four, which is the. There we go, the stabilization. And O P E B trust fund policy. And this was something that was brought to attention beforehand and, you know, obviously. Attorney Bowen's correct. These are just, these are, these are policies, but. If you read what we have on the third section down, and why don't I just read the policy, actually? You know, this is for a hundred thousand should be transferred from free cash as stabilization fund to maintain reserves. At five percent of the current fiscal year's operating budget and then twenty five percent of the remainder of free cash should be transferred to the O P E B trust fund. That section, the the twenty five percent was something I think when we first started setting up, when. You you really weren't rolling over free cash and didn't have that much. So I think when you were, you know, obviously with our budget size, we should be about. You should be having at least four million in free cash every year. So, you know, I can't see us really putting about a million away into the O P E B trust fund. You know, obviously, the. And the the auditors and such and the. And the rating agencies would love us for that, but I think we've got, you know, pretty much too many needs. So I'd suggest is maybe moving that twenty five percent to a minimum. I think we've done three hundred thousand traditionally over the last few years into the O P E B trust fund. So if we write that in and continue with that, that. That should be helpful, you know, with the with the. The bond rating and such, at least not kick us down for for it. So. No, that's something that I think we can, just something to marinate on and we can move forward on that in the the future. So may bring that up as a future item and.
So are you suggesting the twenty five percent is replaced with a dollar amount?
Yeah, I think three hundred thousand makes sense. We can set it on, set it up. That wouldn't, you know, if you push that out for the next twenty years, that's not going to fully fund your. Your O P E B liability, obviously, when it's a, you know, a hundred plus million, but it's. It it'll be helpful and sets a flat rate. So.
Okay.
Much more sense.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's.
You're done for the night?
And I apologize for the background. We're redoing the basement.
Yes, I can tell.
And the reason why it's taking forever is I'm the one doing a portion of it.
Mr. Slaven, do you have a question, sir?
Derek, you need some plywood? My my question really is on number two, a hundred thousand dollars to bring it up to, I think, five percent. I think that number was plugged in there at the time because that's what we needed to make it work. So. I think maybe the hundred thousand dollars really should be just whatever the amount is required to keep it at five percent. That'd be easier for you?
No, I think the we should be good right now because we have approximately four point five million in the stabilization fund. As the rates are starting to, you're, we're actually starting to earn interest from banks. A hundred thousand plus the interest with, you know, vegetarian increases of anywhere from two and a half to. To four percent, just depending on what's happening. It's would keep us right in line.
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is it says we're supposed to transfer a hundred thousand dollars each year. And the fact is, we don't really have to transfer anything. So all it should be is the policies that we stay within that five percent period.
Yeah, I think we can, we can make that adjustment as well.
And that that makes it easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, can you just send me a quickie email tomorrow to remind me and I'll put it on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Liaison Initiative Reports, Board's Comments, Mr. Chadwick?
I have none at this time.
Thank you, Slaven.
Oh, this is Government Day in Massachusetts for me. We have our usual three meetings, M M A. Local Government Advisory Council and the Select Board Association meetings. I sent everybody a copy of all the information all the way through. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read it. I'm not going to go over it because I could spend an hour alone on that. The one area which is really interesting and I think is important for the town, town employees, our future employees. The federal government is looking to, or they've approved, I think, both, and you have to apply by October thirty first. Anyone who has student loans outstanding, who is working for municipality. If they've not paying off their loans, I think it will. I think the program is that they've been paying off their loans for ten years and I may be wrong on that. You can qualify at this point here, it looks like that the government will basically allow you to wipe out whatever whatever balance you have left. Which is a huge asset to anybody who's, well, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars on, you know, school tuition expenses. And it's also probably a pretty good incentive for someone to come work for municipality as well. And I think I sent Derek a copy of the the actual information as well today besides that one. So that was a big piece that came up. We basically, the town, the state of Massachusetts economy is going way above whatever was expected. I think right now we're five billion dollars to the plus right now. That's the reason why they have to give back, I think it's approximately two point nine billion dollars back to the taxpayers, etc. And all that money is slow coming because the state doesn't figure out how to return all this money, how to make it work. So there's a lot of money in the system coming back. We just have to be what I call shovel ready when these things come down the line. In the next meeting, if anybody has any questions, you can bring it up that time for what I submitted. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Words.
Other than attending the planning board meeting, which was the standard operating procedure meeting, nothing extra to report out of it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have no comments on any of my. Side sidekicks. So we will move on to the minutes of August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. What you are finding here is that. Whiteside and Slaney are house cleaning and we found a set of minutes that had been halfway done. And then not finished. So. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes as we learned you didn't have to be there. You are simply. Approving the fact that there are, in fact, minutes. So I may have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for August twentieth, twenty nineteen.
There's second to that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the August twentieth, twenty nineteen. Minutes. Any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven.
Did you need a second for that?
I got one from Jared.
Oh, good to hear. Yes.
Mr. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four zero zero is approved. Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before this body? Hearing none, Mr. Slaven?
Motion to adjourn Wareham.
May I have a second?
Second to motions.
Not debatable, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Have a good night, yes.
Ms. Words?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are adjourned. Good night, Wareham, and thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.